Did you live?
You and Stephen first?
Good evening, and welcome to the Monday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two Litchfield Board of Selectment meeting. The board has just come out of a paperwork review. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the review and approval of consent items. We have an account payroll manifest of July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the sum of two million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents, and July twelfth of two thousand and twenty-two, in the sum of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. We have a payroll manifest of July seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, in the sum of sixty thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents, and July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the sum of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Are there any items members would like to remove from consent? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mr. LaSalle's?
Second.
Second by Ms. Queenen, all in favor, Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's? Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
I am also an aye, motion carries five zero zero. Is there any other business members would like to add this evening? Hearing none, public input will occur no earlier than six forty-five P M. First item of the agenda this evening is the June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review them, or are there any changes or modifications?
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Larry, second by Mr. Lynch, all in favor, Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
I am also an aye, motion carries five zero zero. The next item we have is Stephen Callowar Archaeological Survey. Mr. Brown?
Sure, um, we have folks here from the Litchfield Historical Society. They've been working with, um, Selectmen Queenen, I believe, um, and doing a archaeological study down at the muster, um, site. And Steve, you're gonna, you're gonna take the lead on the introduction and?
Please come forward and join us.
Do I need to recuse myself since I'm a member of the Litchfield Historical Society?
If there's something we're gonna vote on. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, Margaret Perrin, Six-Tallett Road.
Stephen Callowar, one sixty-eight, Charles Bancroft. And so after quite a bit of time working on this project, we finally come to the point where we're ready to undertake an archaeological survey of the Thornton's Ferry site, which is probably the most historic piece of land, uh, in terms of importance in the town of Litchfield. And, uh, what we have done, the Historical Society, after the Conservation Commission used their funds to purchase the property, we thought that it would be wise to have an archaeological survey of the area, uh, so that we didn't disturb things that shouldn't be disturbed or in any way damage the site. And so I discussed that with Troy, and he thought, as we did, that it was a good idea to find out what we could see about doing it. So we had the state archaeologists come down to the site. And he spent a couple of hours walking around the area, and it's about eight acres. And it encompasses the site of the old ferry landing. There were several homes on this site. We know of four or five foundations for sure, and probably there are more there. There was a warehouse there, uh, there were two stores on the property. And so it's a rich historical site, and the old town meeting house was there. There's the remnants of the first town burial ground. And we don't know if there are any bodies there or not, we just know that part of the burial site is still there. And, uh, so it was suggested by the state archaeologists that we undertake a phase one survey. And what a phase one survey would do is to study the area, tell us what they believe is there, do some test pits, and to advise as to what should or should not be done in the future on the site. And after this phase one study, you know, at some point the town may decide, well, we'd like to have a radar penetrating study done of this entire site to really see what's there in detail. Uh, but all of those things are additional money, and so that's not what we were looking to do. We just wanna get a general idea of what's there and what we should protect. And so we put together several, uh, maps of the survey site, uh, surveys of Brenton's Farm as it existed in seventeen twenty-eight. Uh, we found paintings and photographs of the site, uh, taken over the years, mostly from the Merrimack side of the river, and photos of where the floodwaters were in nineteen thirty-six down there, and some pictures of the old homes that existed on the site. And the test pits there are probably going to be about six feet deep. And they are because that area has been flooded so many times that the archaeologists believe there's a certain amount of silt. And the reason they're doing these test pits is they believe that it is a site that is what they call a pre and post-contact site. So it was a site for Native Americans and, uh, of course, for settlers after they arrived. And so we put together, uh, the whole proposal that we'd liked done, and we mailed it out to archaeological firms in the state of New Hampshire. And about seven of them, we had two reply who were interested in doing the work. And one was a firm out of Portsmouth, the other one was out of, uh, Ringe, New Hampshire. And the man from Ringe is a college professor at Franklin Pierce. And when he was a college student, he worked on Native American excavations in the town of Litchfield one summer. So he was quite familiar with Litchfield and what's here and so forth, so he was quite excited to be back here. And when he was working, he was working on the redundant fields. And Margaret has a little map here that shows the unbelievable number of s- sites where all of these stars are in the town of Litchfield that were excavated, identified and partially excavated. And the other company that said that they would be interested was out of Portsmouth. And the state had given us some advice, they said that this should cost somewhere in the vicinity of four thousand dollars. Um, and so we have two proposals, uh, one in that range and one considerably more expensive, almost double, uh, in price. And so that's where we stand, we, uh, met with the Conservation Commission, and we explained the entire project to them, and they were on board with it and sent a letter, uh, to that effect today. And, um, so we, this is our next step to come to the Board of Selectmen to get approval, and then we will go ahead and hire a firm to start when they can, which I would think would be later in the summer probably. And most of the work would probably be done in the fall when the leaves are down. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask us?
On the, um, the two estimates was, is it the same scope of work? Just two different numbers?
Same scope of work.
Wow, okay.
Yep. As a matter of fact, um, the lower estimate actually was more work, uh, the other one did not include test pit pits. That would have been in his phase two project. Um, but from Franklin Pier, uh, Franklin Pierce, the professor from there, said, no, 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 I'm gonna include that in my phase one project.
You indicated that the test pits are six feet deep, how wide are they? Did they indicate?
Um, I think that they're just small pits like that, and it's, yeah, just to see what's in sediment layers as you go down, nothing extensive.
So is it just arbitrarily they're gonna pick different spots to see what they hit?
A little backhoe or something like that to help them, can you do a little backhoe?
I think they do it with a shovel, Kevin.
Yeah?
Cause they said, um, they wouldn't advise any heavy equipment coming into that site.
Okay.
Because they believe that there are probably a lot of artifacts that are under the soil.
So Dr. Callowar, you mentioned eight, uh, eight acres.
Yeah.
Now, what was the extent at, at its peak, how many acres were in that site?
That's it.
So the flood
Yeah.
eroded the site?
Well, the flood eroded part of the site. The muster grounds, we don't believe have ever been underwater.
Okay.
Uh, because that's a high point on that property.
Okay.
Uh, and when you look across from Carl Frank's house, you can sort of see a road going in.
Yeah.
Um, that turns out to be a modern thing. Uh, both archaeologists said, you know, this is not historic, and I said, oh, it's not, and they said, no. This was done for whomever was going up to plow fields and so forth and so on, because this was so wet down in here that that elevated them a little bit. They said it's unfortunate that it happened, but it happened. Uh, and right next to that road is where the old cemetery site is.
Okay. So what you're, what you're saying then is the river hasn't really eroded too much of the site?
It's still eroding.
Oh, okay.
It is still eroding, there's still bank collapse going on.
Okay.
And, um, you know, if you walk over to the edge and look down, uh, you're gonna see trees that have come over this year, ones from previous years. It's, I don't think you could really get up and down those banks because of collapse. It's a fragile site. Um, and it has to be, uh, carefully attended to, and the state archaeologists, this is who told me this, he said, you have a site here that is on a state highway and so close to the river that it is virtually unusable without federal permits. State of New Hampshire permits, EPA permits, um, mostly because of its proximity to the river. And even, uh, going up the road to where the old muster grounds were, the last person to farm that was Charles McQueston. And he told me that toward the end, um, he could feel the banks, uh, not being solid, solid as he brought big tractors up that little road.
When I was up there clearing that little outback, well, many years ago, the bank itself is dropped. Okay, it's coming in, uh, three, three feet, you can see the drop occurring.
Right.
We stopped going up there completely.
Yeah.
Okay, and we saw that.
And the state archaeologist also said, you know, one day the site is going to be gone. Uh, you know, not in the next twenty, it's been sitting pretty undisturbed for a hundred years, since the last big flood. Uh, but the river is going to continue to do its work. And, you know, over the next several hundred years, that might be gone.
Nature the curve in that area.
And so they said, you know, before that's done, that's something the town might wanna consider, is that they would have an archaeological excavation to remove whatever artifacts are there before they're lost.
Did they, did they say how much the radar one would cost?
The, well, um, we have someone in town, Bob Perry, who does that for a living. And, uh, he did some work, uh, at Pinecrest Cemetery. And, um, he also did a little bit of work behind the church, um, to verify that, yes, indeed, there were bodies below these stones, um, to put that to rest for once and for all. And, um, I talked to him and said, you know, we've got this little gravesite here, and we don't know if there are any bodies, but he said that, uh, he would be willing to help us out and look just through that part, and that's probably twenty or twenty-five by forty, Kevin, that little section. And, um, but I called him about six months ago and said, would he have a chance to somebody? He said, I am so far behind with projects because of COVID. And he'd been out on Long Island for a year doing a cemetery there, um, that when he had a little bit of quiet time, he would be happy to do it for us.
He's a very busy man when it comes to that type of radar.
Uh, the Portsmouth estimate on that type of work, Robert, on the radar was about eight thousand dollars to do the entire site, not the, just the cemetery.
All eight acres?
All eight acres.
A thousand dollars an acre? The reason why I ask is I think that it's imperative that at some point, if this is gonna be gone, that we do everything we can to Catch it. To catch it and, and to, and to map it and to get what we can get from the site.
We will probably never live to see it gone.
Yeah.
But we know that eventually it will happen.
We would know what was there.
Because we have to keep in mind that, um, six hundred feet were lost from the eighteen fifties up through nineteen thirty-six. And so Merrimack gained quite a bit of land from Litchfield.
We took some backup, though.
When we get the islands back, we'll take that.
Or if the current changes.
Yes, yeah, unless the current changes.
Flow. So what do you need from us? Approval?
Uh, well, we'd love some, to have some financing from you.
They want approval and forty-one hundred dollars.
Right. That's what we'd love to have.
Troy, how's our bank account? That's the finance guy.
They were right behind you.
Why is Troy laughing when you said that?
It's a tough, tough year. It's a tough year. Um, Karen and I were looking at, at the budget, we're only six months through, and we know we've got some, some issues going on, but I had been talking, um, to Stephen for the past twelve months about this, and, um, I, I think at the end of the day, we should be able to cover it. And, and the contract would be, the contract would be between the town and this contract, not the Historical Society. Historical Society has just done all the legwork and, and, but really, they've communicated with all the boards, the Conservation Commission, obviously, um, purchased the land, oversees the management of that land, so we needed to make sure they were on board, and they are one hundred percent. Um, so really, it would just be the town financing it and signing the contract.
And what the Historical Society sort of thought was that, once we get this site, uh, figured out as to what's what and where it is and so forth, then we already have a kiosk there, and it would be very easy to come up with a little map of all of these interesting cellar holes and old horse shed foundations and so forth, and put little numbers at those spots so that people could walk through and say, oh, well, that's where that was, or what this is and so forth. And so it would be a little, nice little historical site that way.
I'd like to see if we can get it going.
Just need a motion?
I, I make a motion, we, uh, um, approve the outlay of forty-one hundred dollars. In the green room, Troy said that if all else fails, we can take it out of his severance.
My last check.
Padding gift to the town.
There you go.
We'll put your name on one of those placards.
Yeah, absolutely.
On a stone.
I was, I was just gonna send Road Agent Brown down there with the backhoe, and I was gonna do it for half of it.
So we have a motion by Mr. LaSalle's, we have a second by Mr. Larry, any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle's? Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
I have to abstain because I'm a member of the Historical Society.
I am also an aye, motion carries four zero one. Thank you very much, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
And Troy, the project.
Do you want both of them?
Yeah, I'll take both. And, uh, and you've got these too, right? And your emails and stuff?
Yes. And then, uh...
Say happy birthday to your mother.
For your records?
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
What was researched for the site?
Sure. I can, I can scan that and bring it, I think I have this, right?
And we've been
We have it.
She's still there. Probably watching you. You too.
All right, good, thank you.
Now, you're going to be in touch with, uh...
She still works at the
Yes. I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
I do think of her every time I go.
Get it going. Good, all right, thanks.
Thank you, take care.
Take care. Take care, Steve.
Bye.
Thank you.
Next item of business, we have Andrew Gordon, CPA, the two thousand and twenty-one audit, Mr. Brown.
All right, good. So I, it's that time of the year where we, we get, uh, to sit down and, and go over the previous year's financial statements with our auditing firm. We have Scott McIntyre here this evening, uh, along with Andrew Gordon. Andrew was, uh, in the field here, working with Karen and her staff, uh, really did quite an amazing job this year, working remotely and getting the data that they needed. They came in and, uh, was in and out quicker than I think we've ever done it before, so.
Very efficient.
Night's the night when Karen gets all her accolades.
Yeah.
For the great work she does for us.
I think Mr. Gordon was, um, pretty efficient, but obviously, Ms. White, uh, had her, all the information together and well organized, so it made it go well. Um, but with that, that's my introduction, and typically what we'll do is we do kind of a high overview, answer any questions you have. Um, and then, of course, you know, you have a copy of the audit. If you have questions after, uh, this evening, you think about it, feel free to email Karen, myself, we'll reach out to Mr. Gordon and, and get the answers to you.
Okay, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Troy. And thank you, everyone, for inviting us to tonight's meeting. As Troy said, my name is Andrew Gordon, and I was the audit manager in charge of the two thousand and twenty-one audit. Presenting with me tonight is Scott McIntyre, who was the partner on the engagement. Some of you might recall Erica Lucier, who was the former lead on the audit, she presented two years ago. And Scott presented the audit last year remotely, so I decided to invite Scott along tonight, just to have a little more consistency with our presentation. I wanna begin by saying that the audit went very well. All of the town's books and records were in good acting order, and the audit was performed in accordance with governmental auditing standards. As Troy had mentioned for tonight's presentation, I will go through the financial statements and highlight certain account balances and trends. If at any point anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me, and I will address those at that time. I will now turn to the first page after the table of contents, which is the first page of the independent auditor's report. This is the first page of the independent auditor's report. The town received a clean opinion, no exceptions, which is the best opinion you can receive from an independent audit. I'd like to also note that the opinion on this year's report looks different from prior reports that we've presented, and that is due to a new statement on auditing standards, otherwise, we call them SaaS's or SaaS, was implemented for the two thousand and twenty-one audit. And essentially, that changed both the layout of the audit report as well as the information that is required to be presented in the report. We will now turn to page four, which is the first page of the management's discussion and analysis. On pages four through ten, this is known as the management's discussion and analysis. And what this is, is a narrative summary of the results of the town's operations. This section also discusses major financial areas. Instead of reading this to you, we're going to turn to page eleven, which is the statement of net position. We will discuss the same topics there that are discussed here in the management's discussion and analysis. So on page eleven, this is known as the statement of net position. And it is classified as a government-wide financial statement. And what that essentially means is it provides you with a broad overview and more of a long-term focus of the town's finances, similar to that of a private sector business. The first item I would like to go over with you is about a third of the way down the page under non-current assets. And that is the line titled Other Capital Assets Net of Accumulated Depreciation, which had a balance of approximately twenty-three point seven million. That was approximately a two-point-seven million dollar increase from the prior year. And the components of that increase are as follows. There was two major additions in two thousand and twenty-one, the first being a two-point-eight million dollar addition in new roads that were added to the town, which includes Weatherstone Road, Horizon Drive, and Graylock Circle. And the second major addition was a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar communication tower. Lastly included in that increase of the two-point-seven million is approximately one-point-four million dollars in depreciation expense. The next item I will present to you is about three-quarters of the way down the page under non-current liabilities, and that is the line titled Net Pension Liability. You can see that had a balance of approximately three-point-seven million, and that was about a one-point-eight million dollar decrease from the prior year. And that decrease was the result of the New Hampshire retirement system recognizing a net investment income gain of approximately two-point-six billion dollars during fiscal year twenty-one. Just to give you a little comparison, for fiscal year twenty, the New Hampshire retirement system recognized a net investment income gain of a hundred-one million, so just to give you a comparison of those two figures. And this increase in investment income was due to a strong investment market performance coming out of the downturn precipitated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We will now turn to page thirteen.
I could stop you for just a second?
Yes.
So we could anticipate the net pension liability to, that, uh, liability to go up next year because of the current market situation?
Right, because the current measurement date of, that you're seeing that this is measured as of, was as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So next year, it will be measured as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. And that will not be positive?
It's hard to imagine that it would be.
You said it decreased over a million dollars?
Yes, that decrease, uh, was approximately one-point-eight million. Page thirteen, this is the governmental funds balance sheet. The distinction I wanna make for you when, before we were looking at the government-wide statement of net position, the governmental funds balance sheet provides you with a more short-term focus, a narrower focus of the town's finances versus the statement of net position, which is giving you more of a longer, broader focus of the town's finances. And the first item I will present to you is about halfway down the page under liabilities, and that is the line titled Unearned Revenues. And you can see, under non-major governmental funds, there was a balance of approximately four-hundred-fifty-two thousand. This represents the funds the town received in two thousand and twenty-one under the American Rescue Plan Act. These funds will ultimately be recognized as revenue as the town spends them.
So if I could interrupt again?
Yep.
I'm sorry. So it was my understanding that we had, is this what we have actually received, the check that we have actually received? Didn't we have somewhere in the neighborhood of twice that amount?
That will be the, the award to the town, this was the first, um, payment. The second, Trance, does that come in yet? The second payment has not been received yet.
Check's in the mail.
Yeah. Which was supposed to be in in May, June, but we've not received.
So just an aside on that, you know, we have struggled, and I'm sure other municipalities have also struggled with what to do with that money. I just saw on the news today that people are beginning to question how municipalities are spending the ARPA funds. So it's, it's not gonna be an easy task. Uh, but, you know, we, we had thought that if we didn't do it right, they could come back and say, you know, you owe it back to us. But it's, people in Washington are beginning to question how they're being spent.
I mean, I, you know, and I, our, our auditors are here and probably, uh, could comment, but, um, from what I'm seeing in New Hampshire, most of the communities are taking the position where they're funding, uh, infrastructure projects, capital acquisition for these one-time, non-reoccurring events. So doing, you know, a, a water or sewer line project, paving roads, bridges, purchasing a fire truck, a backhoe, one time, you know, not doing, you know, a doggy park and these little nice fun things, you know?
Okay.
Could I just go ahead?
Of course, when I, based on talking to so many clients on the, you know, what Troy was talking about is so many of the clients that we have are taking that approach, but they're, to take it one step further, they're, they're essentially counting it as, using it under the Revenue Replacement Criteria. It provides communities with more flexibility. You, I'm remembering when I was here remotely a year ago, talking a little bit about this. Since then, I don't remember what I may have said on this last year, but I think at the time, the rules were, they were interim final rules.
Yeah.
Well, now the final rules came out maybe sometime in February, earlier this year. They're much easier for communities, particularly smaller communities, to deal with. Instead of having to calculate your lost revenues, you've been given a $10 million free pass, if you will. And so you're, you're scheduled to receive, what, a million bucks?
A million bucks.
Million bucks, you don't, you can claim that and use it as lost revenue, and then you have to report what you spent it on, but you can spend it on the provisions of government services, basically then freeing up dollars for, as Troy pointed out, the one-time projects, if you will. That's an oversimplification, it's not quite that simple, but that's in essence what so many of the cities and towns that we work with are doing. The reporting requirements are so simple if you use Revenue Replacement. That alone should.
Yeah, you jogged my memory, because we had this conversation with you remotely.
Yeah.
And at the time, there were interim rules, and we didn't understand them, nobody trusted them, it was, you know. But since, a year later, it's been very crystal clear.
Yep.
Communities our size, $10 million or less revenue, lost revenue.
Yep.
Category, and just basically going to be report, I mean, there's a lot of work to it, but we're going to be reporting what we've done. And, you know, I won't be here, but I highly recommend that you pick, you know, anywhere from one, two, three, four major projects, and keep it like at that, don't get into 23 different little minute, you know, small little projects here and there. Try to pick, you know, some projects that you know that are on the radar, and you can, you know, address those needs.
The thing that kind of sticks in my craw is that the whole highlight of this is, as a replacement for lost revenue, we didn't lose a million dollars in revenue. So, you know, that, to me, raises red flags, you know?
Scary.
It raises red flags. I hear what you're saying, and I understand, that's what most people are, are more, most municipalities are doing. But the whole purpose is to stimulate the economy due to lost revenue. We didn't lose that, we didn't lose that money, but.
It's very scary.
It is.
Okay.
Anyways.
Digress. We do that often.
Regress, digress.
Okay, I'll finish off with the last item of my presentation, and that is towards the bottom of the page, under Fund Balances, and we will look at the Unassigned Fund Balance. And you'll see that had a balance of approximately $2.6 million. That was approximately $191,000 increase from the prior year. And that increase was primarily due to favorable budgetary results of approximately 452,000, which you can see on Page Forty-four of this report, less 200 or approximately 298,000 of fund balance that will be used towards the town's 2022 capital budget. And I will leave it open to any questions.
So can you explain that again, Mr. Gordon, on the bottom of Page Forty-four?
Excess revenues and other sources?
That, on the bottom of Page Forty-four, 452,000?
If you go the fourth column over, and then if you go to the row excess, and you'll see in parentheses deficiency of revenues over expenditures, you'll see 452,547. So that's the first component of it.
And so, for a simple person like me?
Yep.
Could I call that the end of the year surplus?
Yes.
Calculating in all my revenues I collected above my estimates?
Above your budget, right?
All the monies I didn't spend?
Exactly.
And that's the surplus for the year?
Yes.
452,000. And then, of course, in 2022, we had warrant articles that used the unassigned fund balance, which reduced that 452.
Correct.
298 that you talked about. So we still had our fund balance grow.
Right.
About $200,000, and, okay.
Yep.
So going in the right direction.
Yes.
As long as it's not a negative line.
As long as you, so you always could have that turn where you could, the fund balance doesn't grow.
See, now you shouldn't. That's the critical part, Charlie.
That's, that's a critical thought, I mean, right?
Absolutely.
And going forward, I'm not going to be here, but we've worked hard for the last six, seven years of taking a little bit of money every year in our warrant articles, and, and every year we've had the fund balance has grown 150, 200,000 after we've taken funds from it. So we've been pretty consistent in this town.
Since you called it a surplus, I recommend giving it back to the taxpayer.
Who was going to go there?
You just needed to know where, where it all comes from, so.
I see a lot of the Select Board members taking some notes, so on Page Nine of your Management's Discussion and Analysis, under the paragraph titled General Fund, what Andrew just stated, you have written in your Management's Discussion and Analysis, positive budgetary results on Page Forty-four, less the almost 298,000 to warrant articles. To me, that's the most important message, other than what Andrew said, which was we found your books and records to be in good working order. This takeaway here shows budgetary surplus, we don't want to call it gap, slightly different, but.
Close.
And less what you used for future articles, and yes, there's a nice $191,000 increase in that key account balance.
It's all good news so far.
Could you explain on Page Forty-six, the pension situation here? And I see the trend is proportionate share of, of the net pension liability as a percentage of covered payroll. I see the trend there has gone from 208 up to 274 to 281, but this particular audit is 185%. I assume that's positive? Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure, it's because your, your, your proportional share of the liability went down almost $2 million, and your payroll, you know, probably stayed approximately the same. So the, the, the real driving factor there is the almost $2 million decrease in your proportional share of the liability.
And was that due to investment income?
It was due to a couple of things, mostly the, the investment earnings, but again, I go back to when I was virtual a year ago, I think we were talking about the fact that the, the system decreased its discount rate, which discount rate is what you expect to earn in the future. So it expected that, but they exceeded their expectations, you know, significantly, and that is the one thing that really drove liability downwards, is you exceeded the expectations. You had lowered the expectations, but, but even after lowering them, you exceeded them.
I recall Scott too, reading in the Retirement Systems Report, I believe that they exceeded it to the point of, I think it was around 27%, as opposed to what they expected.
Now, and in, and in an inflationary environment, what are the dangers of the pension system and the inherent liability?
The, the dangers are, what's the discount rate, six and three-quarter percent, Andrew? The danger is that you, you don't make that bogey, that the system doesn't earn 6.75%. And, you know, if you just look at what's happening in the markets, that's probably not, not going to happen. But that's from an accounting standpoint. I suspect maybe what you're asking me about is the funding side of things, not the accounting side of things. They really are mutually exclusive. The, the real danger for local governments is if the contribution rates need, need to increase in, in the near future. That's not, that's really not a factor of, of the accounting side of the equation, it's the funding side. And I, I don't have a crystal ball, I, I can't possibly predict, but, but that's the real danger.
So let's say they declare, due to the cost of living, all pensions will go up 10%. What would be the impact to Town of Litchfield?
It's difficult to, difficult to say. It, I mean, we could run some mathematical equations, what's the impact? To, to your financial statements, your net pension liability is going to go up, and your pension expense is going to go, also go up. But again, that's on the accounting side of things, until legislatively, an increase in the contributions from the local governments is required, your auditors are going to tell you about your net pension liability, rating agencies are going to be slightly concerned about it, but they're, they're probably not going to say too much, the real impact is if you need to contribute more to pay benefits, for the plan to pay benefits.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for everything, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Karen, once again, thank you for the great work, we always appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate it, guys, thank you so much. Karen, you do get a gold star. Right on your forehead, that's.
Couple more weeks, so.
We got staples.
Nice, nice presentation, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, have a great evening, appreciate it. Hi Karen, take care.
She, she just came back today.
Yep, she did.
All right, next we have Select Queen and NRPC 10-Year Transportation Plan.
Yes.
It's all you.
It's all me, you can ignore the first attachment, that was me asking to have it put on the agenda, but the second attachment in the, in the portal, if you can open that up, I know Kevin can't see it.
One that's in NRPC on the top?
It's two pages, and if you go to Page Two, so go to the second one, and go to Page Two of that, you're going to see a graph of timeline dates.
I have one page.
Oh, I have to refresh.
Go down one more.
Oh.
That the one that Troy brought?
I have two.
Scroll down one, like I inserted a page.
Starts with Matt Watkins?
Yes.
Yep, I just got it when I refreshed.
Page Two of that, that's what we'll be looking at.
Okay.
I'm not sure if Rich can see that yet.
I got it on this, it's a little small, but I can.
You can expand.
Heaven.
So I'm going to step back a little bit, when the Planning Board had the townhomes at Dark Hole Farms come in, at the intersection of Corning Road and 3A, we had a concern about the traffic in that area. The Department of Transportation currently grades that intersection as a C minus. They, we brought in a lot of studies, I think we even had two different presentations from studying that intersection. The conclusion was that when those 66 townhomes go in, it will still remain a C minus. However, in 10 years, they're expecting that intersection to fail, so if you're coming down Corning Road to take a left onto 3A, they expect to take 311 seconds to make that turn. It's a five-minute. Our engineer for the town does not think it's 10 years, he thinks it's more like seven or eight years that it'll fail. So we had that going on, and the reason I think that he believed that is if, if in the future more development is up there or a gas station goes in there, it would just be more traffic in that area. So with that said, we had that on the horizon, Dark Hole Farms did go through because it wasn't going to have a big impact. So the 10-year transportation plan came up, you know, whatever, two years or whatever you can put your bids in. So we became aware that maybe this could be part of that, since that intersection is going to fail in about 10 years anyway. Maybe we can get on the 10-year plan through NRPC to get grant money for that. So Jay Menkar does believe this is a good project for that. We had a town member who deals with roads and intersections, doesn't know if DOT would approve it, because they usually wait till it's already failed, but Jay again does think that they know it's going to fail. So this is a graph of our, if we're going to apply to get onto the 10-year plan for a grant, first of all, NRPC gets about 6.2 million of money for all the 13 towns, and so, so any grant we go for would have to be between 250,000 up to like a million dollars, just so they can apportion the money equally, or, or fairly, let's leave it at that. Okay, so at the beginning of June, towns were asked if they had any projects, so you can see, first line is on 63. NRPC will meet on the second line, up until, from 66 to 719, which we're in right now. If we are going to add it to the list, we have to have a proposal to NRPC by August 5th, which is not too far away from now. So I did speak with Matt Wat- Watkins, I think it's Waitkins today, at NRPC. He said the next step here is if we do not have an engineering firm to go out there, they can do this for us at no cost, that's line number four. But we do have to at least fill out an application, there's a process here. If you go to above, if you scroll up Page One, there's a link here in that email, that first hyperlink there, takes you to the application that we would start to fill in. So they are more than willing to work to help us get the application filled out. Then they will try to give it a cost estimate for us. Should that then go forward, that's, that's scope and cost review by the engineering team, then the projects that come in from all of NRPC will go through this presentation at the T-TAC meeting on September 14th, and then they start to score all of the projects. Remember how we tried to get a sidewalk in on Pine Crest, and then they went through, does it have regional impact? You know, they, they go through all this criteria, and that will happen around the September timeframe. So I brought this to the Board tonight because August 5th is coming quickly, and I wasn't sure if we had to get our own firm or not. So when I talked to Matt today, I'm like, well, nobody's ever come up with solutions on how we're going to handle this. When DOT did come in, they suggested, you know, we were, we were joking about traffic lights or rotary kind of as a joke, but really it'd be turning lanes probably. The Dark Hole Farm, the people who bought it left enough room of land to do that. Might have to clean up the corner of the intersection because it's not a true 90-degree, so maybe some lawn of, one of the homes might lose a little bit, you know, hate to say it that way. So Matt's going to look at some of our minutes to see what we were discussing, if we want to use one of those, but that doesn't mean it's the correct choice, but I think it's something to at least go with. So I'm just here for feedback on that, if we want to entertain it going on the list, and if we do.
I recommend we do go on the list, intersection has always been a concern, especially with the truck traffic coming down Litchfield Road to Corning, Corning, Corning Road. You got the cars trying to go up Corning, Corning Road and turning left to go to the plant with a truck. You're there for five minutes, okay, it, it's going to get worse, there's no doubt about it. I think we ought to get it on the list and get that straightened out in there, at least get a plan to work with, NRPC to work with it.
And it is, it's not too, it's a few stop signs, it's London area, then it's Manchester, it's a, it's a regional road.
Yeah, it's a regional area.
There's more people over there probably using that road, I'm not sure about that, but, so, okay, so.
I, I totally agree, we have to get ahead of it, because right now, I think it's a problem right now. And, you know, with the development that is planned, you know, it's, it's going to exponentially get worse, you know?
Certain times of day, you wait a long time at that.
Oh yeah, yes you do. And it's dangerous, because people going south on 3A are coming up over a hill. And like, I was there two days ago, and turned off Corning Road onto 3A, and somebody came zooming up behind me, you know, there was nobody coming, came zooming, and then it's going like this, you know? And I'm driving the speed limit, and he's going. And I'm driving the speed limit, and he's going. But, so it, it's a problem today, and it's only gonna get worse. Not, not about that development, but is.
Yes, more land down below there is still open.
Everybody, uh, has the commuter rail, but been put to, to, to bed, so that's no longer, alright, that's good.
So, I guess next steps is if you want to continue, then I guess who is going to work with, um, Matt? I mean, I don't mind trying to help, but I'm not an expert in it, but do.
I would love to.
I mean, I can fill out an application, but it's gonna need someone to have scrutiny with it.
I have no problem. I have no problem helping out. Right now in my life, I'm moving a little slow, but I'll be better when this gets going.
Do you have to have, when you talked to Matt today, do, do we need to know whether we think it's going to be a traffic signal light, or rotary, or just turn lanes? Do we have to have that kinda specificity?
It would be nice if we had what we actually wanted to do, but there's no time for a study for that. So, but we had, when the, um, DOT came in, cause we, we, one of the things we talked about was reducing the speed about thirty in that area, and they were saying our main objective is to get traffic from Hudson to Manchester, you know?
They don't care about the people.
They don't care, so, um, I don't think there was gonna be a stoplight, let's just say that, or a rotary, and I'm not, I'm not saying that's not the best solution.
Those turn lanes really is just.
But we do have someone in town who might, some insight might be good as well.
Did the town engineer have any comments?
No, uh, no, hi- his was more, uh, he thought it was gonna fail earlier than expected, so, um, I think that we had him in our meeting notes, two extra lanes to turn left, you know, so people can keep going straight, and if you're gonna go left, you're in a left lane to, to go. I thought, and I, I, well, I don't wanna say what direction they were till I actually read it, um, but I believe that was, um, the option they were exploring, but it might be, I don't wanna say eminent domain, it wouldn't be a big part of somebody's lawn, but enough to clean the corners up, so it's not a, you know, an angle like this, you're trying to turn.
I mean, how's it really help, cause you have to merge back in, so.
Again, I, you know, are we rushing it when we don't really have a solution?
Is the right of way up there sixty feet?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look it up.
Those houses are.
You know, the, the project.
No, the right of way are Route three A, some places with sixty feet, fifty feet.
That project could be, um, it could be presented as a phase one.
Down south.
Where you're putting, you're realigning the, you know, Corning and three A. You're getting easements for the, you know, additional turn lanes, and you have easements for the future installation of traffic signal poles and stuff, twenty years from now. But, po- probably introducing the turn lanes would help you seven years from now, and maybe another ten. And then twenty, you know, twenty years down the road, it may get to the point where you need a traffic signal. So you, your first project could be the turn lanes, realignment, and getting those easements in place for future traffic signal poles.
That's all we were discussing.
So that would be the, I, I think that'd be a good approach.
So you're saying, go with what we were.
Yeah, but just make sure you get, you know, in your scope, make sure you have easement for the utility poles. You're probably gonna relocate one of those utility poles.
I think they were speaking too about the paint, you know, where the paint is on the road now, they would actually move, I don't remember which way, you know?
Yeah.
Cause, cause that white house is kind of on the right-hand side, so the road might bend a little, you know? Okay, I wrote down what you said, so, yeah.
I do like rounded.
I'm all for it, though.
Yeah, like rounded, not with continental trucks.
Decorate the middle with flowers and.
So easements with the turn, easements with the turn lanes, I don't know if there's, um, power lines or whatever there, but we'll take a look at them.
No, it's just gonna be the utility lines instead of pole, they keep on trying to move, move that pole.
I know.
The poles may hit so many times.
That's a brick wall.
Yep.
So.
Now they put the yellow flasher on, on the poles now, so people can see the pole before they hit it.
Yeah, there it is.
It's that guy in the South Eagan last week.
I don't know if that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold minimum for a project either.
Yeah.
Is it?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
It's gonna be a number.
Less than a million?
Just, yeah, just the, the engineering construction, you know, it's a, it's well over two fifty.
So do you, so am I here, well, I'll let you guys decide if we, if you want me to work with Matt and, uh.
Yes, I would like you.
Kevin? And maybe we have to pull other people in after, depends, I, I only can, when you click on that and see page one of the applications, it's just contact information. I didn't dare click on the second one, cause I can't get past until I click on contact.
I have it right here, I'll get to it.
And I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of attachments it's gonna need.
Yeah.
You know? And what did he say about that, but really try to be, you know, um, as clear as what we need as possible, and what.
And we gotta pull the information, the plans and anything else.
Because then next, the engineering team is gonna take what we give them, and go try to get the information they need.
We have the plan for the new complex, we also have the plans for the lots on Corning Road. Put those together and get a package, get something to work with, and now you know where your dimensions are all gonna be. And that I can gain out of here.
Works for me.
Yep.
And this, and you got the water line and the sewer line that goes down through there too, cause that's the dairy sewer line comes down Litchfield Road, Corning Road, goes all the way down Route three, or north of Route three, to Temple. The temple, then it discharges in the riv- river at the end, the temple, dairy does.
Are they still doing that?
State road involved. Prey is a state road, right?
Yeah.
Untreated?
No, it's treated from the dairy wastewater.
Real engineer in on this one, cause we have to still deal with the state.
Clean water. Well.
It's, yeah, it's clean.
Gray water.
It's better than Manchester.
I didn't think you could dump in the river anymore.
Hey, thank you.
Well, I don't know how far I'm gonna get with this, it's not my expertise, I mean, it is a state road, we're gonna be.
We built houses up there.
Alright, next item we have, Selectman LaSalle's drinking water delivery issues, Mr. LaSalle's.
Uh, pretty simple, I wa- I was contacted by, uh, a resident concerning the fact that, uh, they had run out of water, and that, uh, Manadnoc, who has the contract for delivering St. Cobain water, uh, they were saying that, uh, they were having difficulty with, manpower issues, and, uh, uh, just having people, it's the week of fourth of July, uh, to deliver. So, I talked with a guy who was, who was very good, uh, from Manadnoc, and he assured me that by the end of the, the weekend, that, uh, the resident that I talked with not only spoke for herself, but also two of her family members who live in the same location or close around there, and they also needed water. And, uh, uh, I, we were assured that by the end of the weekend, which is this past weekend, that they would have water, and I understand that they got it delivered on Saturday. So, uh, the issue has.
It's solved itself.
Well, it's, the short-term issue has been resolved. One thing that I also sent out to you in an email is I contacted, uh, Kevin, uh, to see if, uh, the, uh, road department, if we had a situation on Monday where we still needed water, whether we'd be able to go over and, uh, Manadnoc says they have, you know, it's not a problem. If you wanna go over and pick up water, you can, it's not an issue. And, uh, Kevin was very gracious and said whatever, he would do whatever's necessary to, uh, make sure that happened. Because we did get the delivery, that eliminated that problem. But, one thing maybe we should think about is getting a stock of water and putting it in the old firehouse. And to, uh, so if the next situation comes along, uh, you know, we don't have to jump through hoops. I don't know whether it's needed or not, uh, but, uh, we should at least in the back of our mind think about that, you know?
Are the residents who are using the service, are they on will call, or is it supposed to be scheduled deliveries?
It's scheduled.
Scheduled?
And I don't know what happened in this particular case. Uh, there was another re- resident on Shirley Way that I worked with probably a year ago.
Year ago, and this came up.
Yeah, this came up, and, and in that case, the, the residents were older, and they usually got their deliveries on their back porch, which was wonderful. But now all of a sudden, they get to delivery at the end of the driveway, and, uh, that's, didn't work out so good. But I haven't heard from that couple, so I, I assume everything's going well. But, uh, you know, at le- at least in the back of our mind, we should think about that, you know?
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
I mean, if, if we could just get one truck full, um, I don't know whether the old, the old firehouse, do we heat that?
That would be the best, that way it's, it's heated.
Doesn't go.
It is heated.
You know, and if, if we were gonna do a temporary thing, we were gonna put it in the, um, you know, the highway garage, and then it's kind of in the way of the equipment, and as we get closer to colder weather, it becomes a nuisance, and.
On lieu of us going to get it, we should just have Manadnoc do a special delivery for us.
Oh yeah, I think, so, so, um, you know, Richard and, and myself, we kinda received these calls last week, and, and I was having a conversation with the engineering firm for St. Cobain, and so they've, what they've explained to me is they have Plan A is to see if they can actually hire another water company, because Manadnoc, with all the contamination in Bedford, London area, Litchfield, um, they are having, they're, they're overwhelmed. And with COVID, it's had an impact on their operations, their, their delivery op- drivers, and, uh, we have seventy-four residents currently right now in town that are on the bottled water delivery list. So, their Plan A is to see if they can actually hire another company to help, um, assist with the deliveries, help Manadnoc. If that doesn't work out, then they were thinking of Plan B, where they would work with each town and have a place where they could have the water delivered, you know, set up maybe the old fire station, and they would actually, um, instead of doing it the way we did it the first time around, where people would just come and grab cases of water, St. Cobain would schedule people to show up, and they would have the list, and, you know, make sure everyone checks off and takes their bottled water. So it'd be a scheduled event to come to a place like the old fire station and pick up their, their bottled water. So that's, it's a real good recommendation, I like that.
The right thing to do would be for these folks to start letting people purchase filtration systems and footing the bill for it.
And the maintenance and repair costs.
Yeah. I mean, even people might even be willing to do that themselves, but I mean, the initial cost is pretty heft, hefty. And it's just, I mean, it would be the right thing to do, and they, they've polluted our water, they need to make it right with the people. It's, it's just.
What's the initial cost for the filtration system, Rob?
What's that? Twenty-five hundred, maybe?
Twenty-five hundred for the filtration system?
Yeah, and again, you know, um, from what I've heard, from the start of this, from the public presentations, is that you've got St. Cobain who's caused the contamination, and you got New Hampshire Department Environmental Services, they're looking to, um, have it remediated. And I believe this DES that really is driving the, um, you know, bringing the water to the house through the, uh, the water line system, because that's a.
You guys gonna pay a hydrant cost?
With the hydrants, it's an optional, um, issue for the town. But they want, you know, they want, the long-term, in DES's mind, is to have drinking water brought to the house, where it's tested and maintained by, you know, Penn and Chuck, or whatever water utility exists at that time.
That's not exactly good water either, so they're going from one bed to another.
I like chocolate milk coming out of my faucet.
And the, uh, the other thing with respect to what you said, Troy, is that these folks that had the issue, they have water going past their house, they've chosen not to hook up to it.
Yeah, some.
So, and, you know, I didn't realize that they had tested positive, you know? So, you know, there you go. I don't know how long, how long can they expect to be on this bottle, bottled water? If they have, if they have town water going by, and they've chosen not to hook up, is St. Cobain gonna foot the bill forever?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
That's my thought.
Yeah, see, that's, that's the quandary, because, uh, if, if they, and I don't blame them for not wanting to hook up. They have a perfectly good well that's, that's free, why should they pay, you know, a hundred dollars a month, or whatever the hell it is, for, uh, as Robert said, uh.
Dirty water?
But anyway, that's where we stand.
Thank you, Rich.
I think maybe as a, I don't know if we've done this or not, maybe as a board, we consider sending St. Cobain a letter, voicing our concern over this, and.
And DES as well, there's, there's two sides to this.
Recommending that they make it right with the homeowners.
Have we done that in the past? I thought we had.
Allowing them the option anyways.
I think we have.
I thought we had also.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
Always dust it off and send it again?
Yeah.
I'll write one for you.
So you want.
We'll find somebody to ed- edit it.
Don't edit it. No, no need to edit it.
Okay, next. Alright, next item, we have Chief Freitzel, Emergency Management Director, resignation. Mr. Brown.
Alright, so this is, this is unfinished business from our last meeting. We, we know the chief had submitted his resignation, that he'd be resigning as our Emergency Management Director effective June thirtieth this year. Uh, the board had some questions, and, um, so took no action at your last meeting, asked me to reach out to our legal to see, uh, what their thoughts were, if, if in fact this function is a responsibility of the fire chief. In the job description for the fire chief, it does reference Emergency Management Director, and I think Forestry Manager, um, or Warden. But it, it, it doesn't use the word shall, it just says may, so it was optional there that it, that the position could serve as one of those two positions. In the contract, the employment agreement that we have the fire chief, it's silent, so, um, which would mean that, you know, it was something that was not, discussed and agreed to at the time of, uh, coming to that agreement, so. Legal opinion is that, um, he has, this position, uh, is not required by the fire chief, and, you know, he has all the right, uh, to resign.
Okay, um, no, I sat in on the negotiations, and it was definitely mentioned during the negotiations that he was the Emergency Management Director.
To be.
It was.
We didn't say he was to be, but he mentioned it actually, that he was serving in the position of Emergency Management Director when we negotiated the contract. So I think that, personally, I think that in good faith, we negotiated a contract with a, with a pretty good raise, increased hours based on the fact of his duties and responsibilities included this, and, um, to remove it, I, I, I don't think is the wise thing to do here.
I do agree with Mr. Larry on that, he was it, he accepted it, now he doesn't want it, because it says may. We were on the, when they did the contract, it was in there, that's part of the job.
I mean, I don't wanna, you don't wanna get into much of a personnel issue here, um, you know, in public, but, so I'm just delivering to you, um, you know, the question that you had, and legal counsel's looked at this matter, and has given you an opinion that it's not required of the current fire, fire chief. Tying it back to the con- the con- the employment agreement that you have.
Is there a stipend involved with the Emergency Management Director?
Receives a stipend of one thousand five hundred dollars a year. Paid out qu- on a quarterly basis.
Well, I see no reason why it should not remain in its current capacity. And I think we have the authority to do that. And I think we have the authority to do that.
Well, you would, again, you know, I don't wanna get into a public discussion, but you, you have an employment contract if you want to. Um, so when that contract was signed and agreed to, there was a job description and if you're gonna change anything, then that would, um.
Reopen.
We, it would reopen the contract and that would have to be a, a mutual agreement of both parties.
Mutual?
Both parties would have to agree to reopen the contract. Not just one party can make that determination.
So I think if we wanna discuss this further, we should have it on another agenda under non-public since it is a personnel. Item.
Next.
I did have a member of the public who expressed interest in that position.
So did I. And I also know that, um, Chief Sergeant had to express the interest in the position as well. Um, last year. So, um, there are people that will fill it. But I also think if we, if we do remove it from the fire department, we also take the command vehicle because that is the. Emergency incident vehicle and that should go with the Emergency Management Director. Whereas they have another truck that can do the same job as stated by them, then that's the thing, then we move the. Emergency management vehicle with the position. But that's a discussion for another day.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so let's table it to the next meeting and we'll do it as a non-public. Troy, if possible, please?
Was that the twenty-seventh, Troy, that date?
Okay, he's wondering.
Fourteen from today, twenty-five.
I was picking on him a little bit there. I made an error once.
Next, we have the NHRS Group Two Position Certification Form SRO Officer, Mr. Brown.
So, wh- when you're in the New Hampshire State Retirement Pension Program, we have Group One, which is, you know, the administrative staff. Highway folks, solid waste. Group Two is your public safety, so your fire and police. When you create a new position, there's a system, uh, this is just a straightforward form, that we notify the pension. Um, and they assign a unique number to this position. So it's tracked for indefinitely. So this just requires, uh, the board to, to just vote to approve, um, the certification. Of the SR- this is the SRO Officer that was just created at town.
It was in the consent folder this year.
Have we filled that position yet?
Uh, it's not been filled yet.
No, I believe the intent is to have a cross-functional board. Like a verbal board when they interview the candidates. Which hasn't been set up yet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't catch that.
So what they wanna do is normally when they hire a, a police officer, there's like a written and verbal board they go in front of. So what they like to do is get members from the public, members from police and so forth to be part of the presentation and ask questions. To the candidates for it. And they haven't set that board up or anything yet, right?
Yeah, not, not yet.
And we have a bill for one SRO?
Yes, one new one, uh, which was, you know, affected July first of this year.
And that's a full-time position?
Full-time.
So do we have a motion to add this to the list of, well, to notify NHRS about the new position? Yeah, but we need to.
I'm making a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lynch.
Second.
Second by Ms. Queenen, all in favor. Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
I am also an aye. Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we have the twenty-twenty-three Budget Schedule and Guidance, Mr. Brown.
All right, so Karen and I worked on this schedule today, looking at, you know, the budget committee had already. Uh, established their meeting dates. They do that, uh, right around April, following the, their organizational meeting. So working, um, off their dates forward, trying to figure out how we can, uh, do our review. And ultimately get the budget delivered to the budget committee one week in advance. It, um, works out good that if we could have all the budgets submitted to the town administrator by August first. Some of these boards and committees that meet later, you know, we, we work with them and, um, but obviously the. Um, the folks that are scheduled to meet with us first on August the eighth, uh, we would need their information on August first. And basically the same format that we've used, uh, in the prior years. You can see we have three selectmen meetings where we review the budgets. We start off with, uh, more of the town hall, general government operating, um, expenses. The second meeting, September the twelfth, kinda focuses on your boards and committees, library trustees. And, uh, the general government facilities, which again is more. Across the board, uh, maintenance of all of our buildings and facilities. And then our last evening, we, we reserve, and we do this intentionally to give more time for the fire department and police department. Um, to formulate their budgets, cause their budgets are, um, some of the largest that we have. And that would wrap it up and, um, at that point in time, we'd be in a position where we could. Finalize the numbers and get the budget delivered to the budget committee on September the twenty-second.
And based on this, we'll have a back-to-back meeting in September?
Yeah.
Nine twelve, nine nineteen?
Yep.
Always SIP coming into this. Capital Improvement Plan, we need to get going on that.
Yes.
We still have a plan right now. It hasn't, the plan's not changed. It was adopted, so.
You may have new items rolling into it that could take a higher ranking.
There could, I mean, I, I think it's still, based on my knowledge of, of the town is. The items that are on the CIP that were adopted two years ago haven't changed, so. The plow trucks are there, the paving, the backhoe, the fire trucks.
Just really the ARPA money.
So it's really the ARPA funds, you know?
And when's the next CIP meeting? Is it August first?
August first would be the next one.
Schedule looks like consistent that we usually see.
Very.
This is when Bob's life gets very busy.
So the only, I, you know, the dates work, um, I'm sure they work for the board. Any direction on, you know, as we get this out to the department heads of boards and committees? In the past, the direction that we've just asked everyone to just do a zero-based budget, you know, and, and, and they've. You, you know, the first year that we did that, which was two years ago, was the year that you really saw the.
We learned the most that year.
Yeah, um, so once you've now got everything established really, uh, we, we have a good base, a good zero base. Um, you know, coming forward, each, everyone's usually able to justify, um, all, all of their requests, so. It'll be the same story that you have. You won't have health insurance, you won't have property liability, you won't have workers' comp. I don't know, what would, what will be, uh, budgeting for fuel, energy costs, you know, those would be tough. Tough numbers to put together in July. So I think probably the budget committee and selectmen will kinda agree to those later in the process, October, Novemberish.
Could be six dollars a gallon.
Never know, right?
I've already seen over six dollar diesel.
Starting to cut down a little bit.
Sam's car does four dollars and thirty-seven cents for regular today.
Okay, that looks good.
All right, I think the schedule looks good. Anybody else?
I think we, these fears of rising gas costs are unfounded. I understand we have a representative that's going to Saudi Arabia and all is gonna be solved.
Uh, next, we have the Town Administrator Report, Mr. Brown.
All right, just a couple of things. One, I, Road Agent Brown was on vacation last week. Um, and he came into my office today, w- he'd been collecting some information. He's become aware of a used vehicle. A two thousand eighteen Ford three fifty. It's a four, four-wheel drive vehicle. Uh, it's got dual wheels on the back. Uh, it's got twenty thousand miles on it. It's, he showed me a picture of it today. It's white, so it matches our fleet, you know, color, um, looks brand new. And so he's come, you know, he's been negotiating a price. He's come to thirty-five thousand dollars as an agreed price. And he's been getting quotes to get plow set up on it and sander, salter all installed. And right now he's, um, not final on the number, but pretty close. And so he's looking at about twenty-one thousand dollars to do that, so. He could pick up a used truck with brand-new plow and sander, salter for fifty-six thousand dollars.
It's two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen with twenty thousand miles, twenty thousand miles.
Chevy Ford?
So.
Is this another, uh?
More, one of those mid-size.
So it would be an additional unit?
Right.
Um, is this coming from another municipality or?
No, it's, uh, it would be a private sale. Um, his, his actual connection is someone. A contractor that did plow snow for him for a couple of years, no longer does, and he has his own heavy-duty, uh, mechanic, uh, repair shop. So he's been able to acquire this vehicle. I think what happened was the body of the vehicle, uh, was damaged or something. He just removed it and put a, a brand-new. A flatbed on it. So it's perfect for what we do, cause we'll just put a sander right on, right on the flatbed and strap it down, just like the one. We had last year. So he just wanted me to kinda throw that out there and you guys can reach out to him, ask him any questions because he would like. At the next meeting, he'll be here and he's gonna be asking permission to buy it and will, you would have to authorize the use. Of the, uh, capital reserve fund.
Mm-hmm, good.
Well, I mean, if it.
If you wanted to get crazy, you could actually make it your, your, your first ARPA, um, expenditure.
But normally you could.
You could.
It'd also keep us from having to buy a new one.
You know?
Save money in the long run.
It's gonna save us fifty thousand dollars, just about. Okay, we'll talk to him next time.
And it's one, it's one of those trucks that's the mid-size, so you're not required to have a CDL license to operate it.
Kind of the path we've been going moving forward.
But we do have, all our drivers are CDL, right?
Uh, all of our, yeah, of our.
Full timers.
Two, two full timers are CDL.
Plus Kevin, okay.
Well, right now, our, our, our two full timers is Kevin and Josh and they're CDL. Uh, he's just on as a, right now as a temporary. I think Kevin will be talking to you about that person when he comes in.
How about hiring him full-time, okay?
Yeah.
And he's got a CDL?
Uh, he does not have one at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think, uh, many of you were, Engine One, we had the, we had the fire at Wilson's, um. And so one, in your read fo- file there, we had a, a letter of appreciation that was sent from Wilson's farm thanking the. Litchfield Fire Department and the staff for all their efforts that they, uh, took during the fire. Um, but also we, we learned that Engine One has been taken out of service. Uh, I've, you know, you've received correspondence from, um, our fire deputy. It's story kind of interesting when I talked to him one-on-one and, and see how they started having some problems and. It's all seems to be electrical, just corrosion, leading to one thing after another and. So eventually, um, they were able to get it down to Massachusetts to the Emergency One dealership. And it's there right now. We don't know how long it'll be there. They, they're experimenting, experiencing. COVID staff shortages, supply parts shortages and, but it's there.
Like everybody else.
Yeah.
Now, this is a twenty-year-old unit, right?
This is our, um, yep, twenty-year-old engine.
So the electronics.
It's the frontline, you know, that's the frontline engine, so.
So the electronics and the wiring and everything is twenty years old?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
I mean, it's repairable, but it's gonna, I, I wanna say it's, you know, but it's gonna cost some money.
Well, we, the voters did approve the repair fund.
I know. Yep, which helps. All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Queenen?
Lightman reports. Capital Improvement Plan Committee, last meeting, uh, there wasn't one for July fourth. The next meeting will be Monday, August first, uh, six P M. here at the town hall. Planning Board, there was no July fifth meeting. The next meeting will be Tuesday, July nineteenth at seven o'clock P M. here at the town hall. We will continue with our Albuquerque Av- uh, workshop as one of the agenda items. Uh, Nashua Regional Planning Commission, the next full quarterly meeting will be Wednesday, September twenty-first. At seven P M. at NRPC's office at Thirty-Two Street in Nashua. That's all.
Thank you. Um, Recreation Commission, we are on our summer schedule, so we haven't had a meeting in a while, but we do have one tomorrow evening. School Facility Improvement Committee, we are taking a tour this Wednesday of the ongoing renovations of LMS. So next time we meet, I'll give you an update on that. And that's it for my side. Mr. Larry?
Budget meets in two weeks, I think. Getting ready to come out of hibernation.
Start up again.
Starting up again.
Mr. Lynch?
Con- con- Conservation met last week. I was not there. Do other reasons, but, uh, they gave me the report of what they're doing. The archaeological studies you heard tonight, they're part of that, they're all set for that. Uh, Avisas Pool Replacement Pro- Pro- Project. Maybe, right, right past Pocket Park, they're gonna do some pool replacement in there. They're all set on that, they're blessed. NRPC Conservation Plan, the NRPC came in to discuss with board, with the group. And they will be develop, developing for us, uh, comments and phasing this fall for a plan for that conservation stuff. And the land preservation strategy, the Conservation Commission is developing a land preservation stra- strategy. To provide guide, guidance on how the Conservation Commission approaches land conservation. What is important to buy and what are the, uh, options A T C. Things come out of that meeting.
Great, thank you.
This is actually destroyed on budget. Did you get, did you get those answers from the last, the last meeting that I had asked you about?
No, I'm gonna get, I'll be responding this week.
Okay.
Karen was out, so we didn't have a chance to, to, to talk about it.
No, I appreciate it. I was actually on a roof, on a forty-foot ladder, and I thought of that, I don't know why.
That's what you do when you sit there.
I know, I'm up all alone, me and the woodpeckers.
You patching holes?
Mr. LaSalle?
Um, yeah, the, um, Heritage Commission is. Hopefully meeting this week on the Dark Hole property. And to decide, you know, that, uh, situation, um.
Is that for the, the barn or the?
The riding, you know, with that big one where they ride the horses inside?
Yeah, the rider's stable.
Is that what they call it? The stable?
There's three buildings.
Yeah.
There's the house.
Yeah.
There's the biggest building, which is the newest, the pole building, and then there's the barn. It's my understanding it's the barn.
Yeah.
Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding.
We went through that already.
I heard demolition permits were pulled, right for, I don't know if, the barn was one. I don't know about the riding stable.
The barn, we, they, we talked about trying to move that down to Moors Falls, we can't get it underneath the power lines.
Yeah.
Cause you can't get, have to move it, gotta take it all apart to get it down there. It's just not expensive. Plus the existing construction at barn is not the same as what it originally was. It's been changed a lot. Okay, better off to go and that's what, uh, the group that we looked at, okay, and the bill, the bill inspector, myself, Joan. Conservation, okay, and Jason, all met there, we tried to figure out something, but to move it and then they talked to the. People who own the wires, you can't, gotta be so many feet away from there when you go underneath them and you just can't get it down there.
Yeah. So here, I, I just didn't know, do you know that there's been work, um, as Kevin just explained? Into looking into trying to save the barn and move it. And they came to the conclusion that it's just.
It's just too much.
It's just.
The wires.
It's too much work and, and when you, when you take a look at the, the, the sad thing with that barn is the second floor. It's all original. It's the old timbers and everything that, you know. It's the old timbers and everything that, you know, we all know and love, but the first floor's been all rebuilt. They must've just trimmed it up and, and put in a whole brand-new first floor, modern-day studs and concrete and all kinds of stuff.
You got block walls in there?
Yeah, there's block, yeah, cinder block, yeah.
That old, that old construction, I, uh, the bar, the farm that I grew up on in Illinois had a barn that was built in nineteen nineteen and it had the pegs, it wasn't put together with, with nails. The house that my wife and I live in, if you go up in the attic, the, the rafters in the attic still have bark on it.
Wow.
And that house, if you go deep enough into the walls, it's stuck out. They're almost like a brick and the siding and everything is just on the outside of it. So it's a very interesting, that house was built in seventeen seventy-one, the front part, but uh.
Matthew Thornton House.
What's that?
Matthew Thornton House, I believe.
Yes, it was part of the, the ferry property. But uh, it's very interesting.
Detroit, why we're on the subject of the uh docked stable? Did you ever get a chance to reach out to the contractor that owns it if we can save the rails from all the white fencing?
I didn't know, was I supposed to?
You and I chatted about it one day, it'd be great to save all those, right, to help beautification, so then we just have to go and buy new posts. And if he's willing to give us all the rails.
Yeah.
So whenever the beautification team goes out and starts putting up white fence, could save a ton of money. And if he's just gonna demolish them right when he starts to excavate.
I don't think he's gonna do the front part, he's gonna leave that there, I think he's going, at the inside ones, he's gonna get rid of. There's gonna be something going down the side of the road.
But I mean, any we could get could help with the beautification when they start doing different intersections and sections of town.
That riding building would be a nice indoor facility for the kids of the town.
But that's even worse, that's a tough one to move. You gotta unscrew it first.
That's a pole building.
Yeah, it's a pole barn.
Nice for the highway department. We could park, you know, I, I would assume we could park all of our plow trucks.
Nice community, community donation. Just cut that piece out.
I, I, we've said it in the planning board, but just so you know, that owner has done a lot, he donated the building. Right, he's been preserving the building, he's letting them farm on it still, he gave some to conservation, I mean, he was very generous with that land.
He's a Litchfield resident, right?
Yep.
That's why I'm hoping the fencing.
Does he still live yet?
Yeah.
I thought they all bought a place out in.
You, you're talking about the owner of Darkhole?
No.
The owner who bought it.
The, the, the bought it, the purchaser.
Developer lives in town.
Right, he lives in town.
Yeah.
Weatherveil. Weatherview, excuse me. What'd you say? Weatherview, is where it is.
The old barn doesn't bother me so much, I have bad memories of hay in that barn. Ninety-five degree days, covered in dirt and hay and.
Square bales?
Square bales.
Square bales, yep, I remember those days.
Anything else, Mr. LaSalle?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, being that it's eight oh seven, I'd like to open up the public input, are there any members of the public that would like to provide input? There's been nobody here all evening, so at eight oh seven, we're also closed, public input.
Les Oskar's got anything to say?
Yeah, he's got his headphones on, so he's good. All right, we do have um two other items this evening, they're non-public sessions, they're under RSA ninety-one A colon three two B Hiring of Employee and RSA ninety-one A colon three two A Investigation of Employee. Do we have a motion to go into non-public? We have a motion by Mr. LaSalle. We have a second by Mr. Larry. Roll call, vote. Ms. Queenen?
Aye.
I am also a yes. Mr. Larry?
Aye.
Mr. LaSalle? Okay, it's five zero zero. The board is now entering a non-public session. While we do not anticipate the need to return to public sessions following the non-public session, for any reason other than to adjourn the meeting, we reserve the right to do so if the public session necessitates the board taking action in a public session. We are now entering public session, thank you for tuning in this evening and I hope everyone's well. Sorry, non-public, thank you, Mr. Larry.
Have a great night.
Have a great evening, everyone.